Okay, folks, it's seven o'clock. Everybody would please rise. Councilman Andrews believes in the implication, and Councilman Wright believes in the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, and Lord, just thank you for the opportunity to gather together and do the business of the City of Centerville. Lord, we give you praise for what's going on in our city. I ask that you would continue to lead and guide us in the way that you would have us to go, give us wisdom, and give us strength. And Lord, help us to, most importantly, do the right thing. And for all these things, Father, we're going to give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Councilmen now in session. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Love having these people here meeting. Thank you, thank you. Welcome, everybody. I know we're doing this again this way. I hope by the first year, we can actually start meeting in person, be able to smile at each other and say, hey. All right, the first item on the agenda tonight is public comments, and we have nobody here for public comments. So we move on to the next one, which is adoption of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. November 5th, 2020, regular council meeting, and November 17th, 2020, council work session. Are you intending to motion to adopt both as written, or we can separate them if necessary?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept both sets of minutes as written. Second?
I have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any discussion on it? Okay. Hear none? I call for a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hear none? Passing. You have a question. Thank you very much. Next item we have is on the old business. Item number three, Center Park Pavilion Rental Agreement. Councilman Evans and Director Marketing, Hogan, please.
Please proceed, Mr. Mayor.
So the Center Park Pavilion Rental Agreement is in front of you guys. This was last talked to you guys on July 7th, where you guys asked the Center Park Committee to meet and go back and look at the rate schedule. We met on July 21st and August 27th. The rates for the hourly, for hourly Monday through Friday will be thirty dollars per rental. Saturday will be forty-five dollars an hour. And daily for rental Monday through Friday will be three hundred dollars from eight to eight, and on Saturday, eight to eight, will be five hundred dollars with a hundred dollar cleaning fee. So this is just so that we have in place a user agreement. It's modeled loosely after the community room rental agreement, just for you guys to allow that amenity to be open to residents and visitors to rent from our pavilion.
Well, Councilman Evans, are you intending to motion?
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept these two agreements.
Second?
It's just one agreement, Councilman Evans. The community room rental agreement is separate.
Okay, so I move we accept this one agreement.
Okay, and we have a second.
Second?
All right. Any further discussion on it?
Yes, sir, I do. The only thing that I don't like about these two agreements is that these are items that will be going to people outside of the city hall, and I would like to see a city seal somewhere on it.
I think before this, well, I guess the community room one has that, that's City of Centerville logo on it.
You're talking about the baseball one?
Yeah. I think I'm fine with it for nothing else, but it helps you tell which form is which, that they're not exactly the same, because they're very, visually, they look very similar.
I think they do, and that's fine. But, you know, it's, these are items that are going to the public. And I think they should have something representing official Centerville documents, and the city seal would do that. I'll send a copy to the city seal.
Okay, so here, you want to see a change in here, you want...
Can you adopt them with the instruction to put the seal on them?
I don't, I don't, I don't, you want it...
Is that okay, Councilman Evans? Are you okay with that?
The language, and then go back and put it on there.
That's fine.
Before it goes out?
Yes.
That's right, and then you get it.
I agree with the language.
Okay. So we've modified to adopt it, to also put the city seal on it, and it has been seconded. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. But I did have a question, though.
Okay.
Is this, who's going to be doing all the, you know, scheduling and working of the park and collecting the funds and keeping track of who's got it and who doesn't?
I spoke with City and County Harrison today, and we're going to run this specific agreement through the Center Park Fundraising Fund. And then both, Alicia, the events coordinator for the City of Centerville, and myself will oversee the day-to-day scheduling for that. We've got a planner ready. We talked with Krista, about how she runs the community room rental work and tasks.
Okay, that will, will be public as to who's right at home, so we can...
In subject of record, sir.
But we will try to publicize it in some way, like on a calendar or something like that. I'm not quite sure exactly how that's going to play out on our website, but we'll try to make it blatantly apparent. So people are like, can I rent that? Oh, I had no idea it was rented.
That's why I'm trying to avoid this confusion as to who's got it when.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we're going to try to redo the how-do-I-rent-facilities webpage within our marketing in the next couple of weeks. And so I'll try to make that readily available information, so you don't have to go through another record to post.
Okay. Right to operations, I'm Mike Ruff. Have you have any comment on this at all?
Okay, I think you've done some good, good hard work on this deal.
Okay.
My only question, Mayor, is practically, who's going to, who's going to physically receive the funds? Somebody comes to pay their fee, where does that money get turned into?
So it will, it'll either be through a square account, or Alicia and I will receive in money as it is through the fundraising account.
Does it need to come in over here?
It'll go that way.
I would rather, this is just, I'm, I'm, I would rather see, anytime we're bringing it, I'd rather have it all going into the same place. I just think that's cleaner and safer. Anytime you get to where you've got multiple inputs like that, you're just, it, it's not that, it's not that I'm insinuating that anybody would do anything else. Because I'll just tell you that I have a really great story about checking the church finances and being really, trying to figure out what was wrong, and then discovering that during a really busy week, I got drafted to take the deposit to the bank, and I found it in the console of my truck about four months later. So, there's just stuff like that that happens when you get out of your system. We already have systems in place in there. It would be, I think it would be just better if it all went through the front, front window.
Right now, we've got three places to take money, correct?
Um, yes.
Here, here, and there.
And, right, New York City clerk's office and...
Water, not City Department.
It's three. I think it needs to come in over here.
I can coordinate with the city clerk.
Yeah, just work with them, and that's, the details can be hammered out, but I just...
Absolutely.
That way, everybody's, everybody's hands are clean. It's just...
Understandable.
Cleaner that way.
I'll coordinate with the city clerk's office up in City and County Harrison.
Okay, any further comments, anybody? You have another time?
One, one quick one, Mayor. Is, is there, I know in the past, we've had some, do we intend to, I don't see any language in here about whether we're going to try to have any oversight or approval over what types of events that we're having. I don't know that we should. I just, I don't, I don't know if we discussed that.
There's some language in here about when it would trigger a special events permit, and the special events permit is a much larger committee that approves those. It is the fire chief's signature, police chief's signature, director of operations, and myself, in order to just make sure that we're tapping into city resources effectively. So if it's a ticketed event, if there's alcohol there, if it's going to be extra-large events, et cetera, that typically just triggers a special events permit, which allows for much more oversight. This is going to be your smaller, like...
So if somebody comes in and uses this form, and it's not a birthday party or a barbecue, we're going to say, you need to talk to the special events committee.
And then it's a special events form.
That's perfect. That's, that's what, that's what it should be. That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
They, they just, I, item fourteen here. Okay, I'll call for a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Got hear none? This particular one has passed. Thank you. Goes to, item number four, there's a community room rental agreement. Councilman Evans and Director of Marketing, Hogan, next, please.
I was doing both at the same time, Mr. Mayor.
I know you were. Well, we could have done that if you brought that up that way, but I...
The community room user agreement is, again, a great agreement that Krista Bunningsfield has used for our community room many, many years. And this was just updating some rules, specifically that were more things that were already being enforced about thermostat, et cetera, changing some timing throughout the, changing some timing, and then making sure that there are no rentals too early on. Again, things that are already in place. It's really similar to the pavilion agreement, and then also simplify the monetary structure. So this is a very similar hourly rate of thirty dollars per hour. Monday through Friday, Saturday, forty-five dollars per hour. Daily community room rate, eight to eight, is three hundred dollars. Saturday is five hundred dollars, eight to eleven, cleaning fee is seventy-five dollars.
Okay, are you intending to motion on this one?
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we go ahead and approve this agreement with the same caveat as the city seal for the last.
Second?
Okay, I'll motion a second. Any further discussion on it?
Uh, Mayor, I had a question.
Yes, sir.
About the maximum number of people we have in COVID nineteen restrictions. Do we have that included or as a supplement to it to suggest that it can come out later if it can, but I just want to, I just want to make sure that we have something that is in reference to the current...
We, we're, we're not renting that community room while we're under any COVID nineteen restrictions.
No, and we're under the governor's order.
That's right.
Which would prevent us from permitting a gathering of more than a certain number of people. So at this point, as I understand it, Krista's not renting the community room right now anyway, because of that.
The maximum occupancy number has actually come from Chief Jones in...
Right, that's probably.
Okay, any further comments or questions? Hear none? Call for a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Okay, that one passed too. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We all appreciate that. There's no more old business. We have new business now. Item number five, approval contract, Centerville Police Department for Proposal Promotional Assessment Center. Councilman Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. I've put this in front of Mayor and Council tonight, since Centerville has a stellar record of our past chiefs over the last fifteen or nineteen years. And yes, that was sarcastic. But we are, I am asking that we enter into an agreement or contract with the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police. They, they have an assessment tool that they use to evaluate potential candidates for police chief, and there is a cost to it. And like I say, I just want us to be able to have somebody look over this as we go through the selection process. If they do five candidates, if you look on the next, on the next page, and then it ranges from five to eight candidates. It runs from forty-five hundred up to seventy-two hundred if they have eight candidates. And I think it will be money well spent to give the opportunity for experts in the field and law enforcement to look over potential applicants and give us some feedback on those particular applicants. But I just, I'd like to make a motion that we do go into this agreement for proposal, this proposal promotional assessment center agreement. Second, then, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Has anybody had an opportunity to review this?
Yes, sir. I do have one comment, just as Councilman Andrews mentioned. I think this is a great opportunity for us to look at candidates through a, a system that has already been set up with people who know that business. It gives us an opportunity to really get some good candidates, I think, or some good input, and some good recommendations. So I'm kind of excited about this, to see where it leads us.
Yeah, that's, that's some good, good backup comments on that. I appreciate that. Anybody else? All hear none? I'll call for a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, you're passing, Nancy. Thank you so much. I'll go ahead and sign this. Item number six is next, social media policy update. Councilman Evans and Director of Marketing, Hogan, please.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm really pleased to see this document. Taken some time to read it, and I'm going to go ahead and let Director of Marketing tell us more about it.
Yes, sir. So in front of you guys have an updated social media policy. We've had a social media policy for a number of years. It was really good to make sure that we've got a continued presence throughout all of our social media platforms, that's representative and accurate of what your intentions are as Mayor and Council. Some of the changes in here really just outlines the change of city administrators for these specific social media platforms, using specific tools that can further outreach, not using other tools, like the job opportunities to be in line with HR requirements. Also making sure that we are not contributing to rumors, making sure that we're using reputable sources, and also working well with other agencies and any media requests that go through proper channels of our official city email. Again, these are just some lessons that we've learned recently, and it's, it's great policy and opportunity to just make sure we have all of our bases covered when we're talking about our social media platforms.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this policy as written.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Anybody have any discussion on this?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I, I've looked at some of the things that we've done in the past, and, and, you know, we've had some, some things where social media wasn't in line, and we've had an opportunity to discover that. But with this process, it allows us to have a point of contact, so that we won't have people going off on their own and doing things. And if they do, having read this policy, they will be in violation, and you don't want that to happen. So, that's all.
Anybody else? I know it's taken us quite a while, over a year, I would say, to actually develop this thing, because it kept going back and finding little things and having to rewrite some other things. So I think it's a well-done document, in my opinion, reading through it. You know, I'm certainly pleased we've got this policy now established.
Is there any, is any discussion about, I don't see it in here, but is there any, what is the, what is the force and effect of this policy? We find that somebody is intentionally or unintentionally violating it or abusing it. What will be, this may be a bad question for this topic, but what is, what is the recourse? What is the...
The city has in our personnel manual grounds for disciplinary action, and certainly intentionally violating a policy will be something that would be handled through that process.
Violating any policy, so this is...
Yes, sir.
Any state and city policy?
Yes, sir.
For city employees, but it also gives us ground to remove visitor posts that are putting, that have any non-PG-rated content that's just articulated in that disclaimer statement and taken from our social media policy and put on every single one of our social media pages for the other side of it, in the Public Act of our page.
Okay, I'll call for a question.
I had a question.
Oh, please.
So the employee handbook said that the, it's been updated with the social media information in there?
It will have to be, but that happens after you all adopt it. What we usually do is send out a memo to employees about any changes to the personnel manual, updated policies, and have them sign an acknowledgement of that policy, and it goes in their personnel file.
Okay, I see.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good question, though. Clarification. Okay, I'll call for a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Passing, Nancy. Thank you very much. And I think we have one more item here. Presentation of local economic development tools. Councilman Evans and Director of Economic Development, Hogan.
So, Mayor and Council, I just had a quick presentation for you all this evening, just to talk about what economic development tools you guys have available to you. I provided you guys with a Word document in your packets, but I've also got just a quick PowerPoint I wanted to run through with you. So there's lots of different local economic development tools that are available to cities. Some of those you guys have explored historically in the City of Centerville, and some of those haven't been explored, and I've got a little bit of information about all of that. Downtown Development Authorities is something that the City of Centerville is familiar with. They develop and promote for public good and general welfare, trade, commerce, industry, and employment opportunities, and promote the general welfare of the state by creating a climate favorable to allocation of new industry, trade, commerce, and the development of existing industry, trade, and commerce within the municipal corporations of this state. Revitalization and redevelopment of the central business districts by financing projects and the dischaper will develop and promote for the public good and general welfare, trade, commerce, industry, and employment opportunities, and will promote the general welfare of this state. So the steps to enact the DDA, if Mayor and Council were interested in that, we would create and pass a resolution declaring the need for a DDA, designate the downtown area boundaries within the city, appoint an initial seven directors to the authority, file copies of the resolution with the Secretary of State and the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. The directors are appointed by the governing body. Only one member may be an elected official, and their term on the board ends when their term expires. At least four members also must either have or represent a party who has an economic interest in the redevelopment, a revitalization of the downtown development area, and then board members serve a staggered six years. So the Downtown Development Authority Law of 1981, you can sue, AMB sue. You can make and execute contracts and other agreements, such as contracts for construction, lease, or sale of projects or agreements to finance projects. You can purchase and/or own property, real or personal, and sell otherwise disposable property, lease, or rent property. The authority's property is tax-exempt to finance projects by loan, grant, lease, or otherwise finance projects using revenue bonds or other obligations of authority to borrow money, and that requires permission from City Council. So apply for and receive government grants, loans, loan guarantees, or other financial assistance. To receive and to use tax monies, the city can levy up to three mils for the support of the authority. To prepare plans for the downtown area or hire others to prepare plans. To exercise any power of public-private corporations under state law, which is not in conflict with the authority's public purpose. So Centerville's history with the Downtown Development Authority, there was a resolution to form the Centerville DDA, passed by Centerville City Council, August 3rd, 2004. A resolution to dissolve the Centerville DDA was passed by Centerville City Council, September 21st, 2010. The DDA statute specifies that each authority shall have perpetual existence, therefore, once created, DDA may not be disbanded by local jurisdiction, but it can go in an inactive state. There's six, there were sixteen different directors over six years. Most of the notable activities from all of those minutes and agendas were support for the Margie Drive extension, discussion of Town Center at Centerville, and the UGA Sherret Plan. Potential reactivation of the Centerville DDA. To reactivate the Centerville DDA, Mayor and Council would have to pass a resolution, as I stated, that would have the intended downtown boundaries in Centerville, the Clark Patterson Lee Town Center Master Plan, for example. Potential activities could include Town Center development, Town Center creative financing, support of small businesses and entrepreneurs through rental space, manage a TAD, a BID, or a CID, et cetera. Potential directors, we've got a great grassroots leader, grassroots leaders in our housing team members, or DDA members, and then other leaders who want to be involved. And then I do want to pause, because that was a lot of information. Does anybody have any questions about... I think that's a great question that Mayor and Council will have to answer, and I just want to present all of the opportunities. I do believe that a Downtown Development Authority could be very beneficial in regards to moving forward with Town Center at Centerville now that it's in our park. You all talked about intending to build the beach, and then the boardwalk is something that will also have to take a very active role in. So I do think that it could be time to start a Downtown Development Authority again. I will say, all of the minutes and agendas from all of the Development Authority meetings are cataloged in a binder in my office, and should you guys ever want to review all of that, I'd be more than happy to scan it in, make sure you guys have copies.
And the only terminal lesson from your presentation was the UGA Sherret Plan.
In 2007 and 2008, there was another Town Center Master Planning Process done through UGA design students and through the UGA partnership, and it was...
It's different from the CPL?
Yes, it is different, but there were three different concepts, and CPL considered the UGA Sherret Planning Process when they were going through the Town Center Process. And I've got all of those plans and everything. If you'd like to review those. Okay, the next tool that we have in our tool belt is the Business Improvement Districts, or BID. They're designed for traditional downtown business districts. They're special districts where property owners agree to be taxed at a higher rate than the rest of the community in order to pay for expanded services that are not already being provided to the City of Hope. They're created by petition within the designated area, which must include, within the area designated, which must include a plan for the area, including a map and description of the batteries, which could be the CPL plan. Description of the supplemental services included, proposed maximum mileage rate to be levied, and/or the percent of business license surcharge, and budget, a timeframe for carrying out plan, and an optional design guideline or rehabilitation standards. An agreement in writing of fifty-one percent of the taxpayers listed on the digest for the area outline those taxpayers who own by dollar value fifty-one percent of the assessed property, both real and personal within the area, is needed. The BID funds must be used for advertising, promotion, sanitation, security, and business retention and recruitment. That one was fairly straightforward. Do you guys have any questions about Business Improvement Districts? They're typically a tool that's coupled with the Downtown Development Authority. You can basically approach the residents and the businesses in the area and say, we'd like to do this for you. We need a little bit of extra financing. That's the creative financing I referenced when talking about a Downtown Development Authority. But it could be a great opportunity for the DDA to consider implementing one of these in the Town Center area. In the same respect, very similar, but a little different, Community Improvement Districts. CIDs are special districts where property owners agree to self-impose tax to be used for improving the district. They are a good way of leveraging state and federal tax dollars for roads or other major infrastructure. So steps to enact the CID, a local act of the General Assembly is necessary. The legislature designates a governing body of the CID, which can be the city, county, or administrative body that represents both. A resolution of the applicable city and county consenting to the creation of the CID, and written consent of the owners within the CID that represent a majority of seventy-five percent of the real property value. CIDs can pay for street and road construction and maintenance, parks and recreation facilities, stormwater and sewage collection and disposal systems, water development, storage, treatment, purification, and distribution facilities, public transportation, terminal and docking facilities, and parking facilities, and such other services and facilities as may be provided for by the general law. Questions about Community Improvement Districts?
That one's a little broader, but it's a lot, a lot more rigorous to get it past. It sounds like seventy-five percent of the property value is what that's at with the, with the dollar amount of property worth. From top to bottom.
Yes. So our next one is the Tax Allocation District. It's only known as a Tax Allocation District, really in Georgia, it's known as a Tax Increment Financing District in most other states. Their popular mechanism... They're a popular mechanism for revitalizing blighted or underutilized areas such as ground fields, declining commercial corridors, or industrial sites. So you can see with this graph, this is the best visual representation I can find. You basically create it and set a baseline property value. And as taxes increase in that specific area, that captured appraised value is what goes into a specific fund, the Tax Allocation District Fund. And that's what's used. You can also use revenue bonds for borrowing that money at the creation. And then it's always got a deadline afterwards. So steps to enact. This also means a local act by the General Assembly that authorizes the use of Georgia Redevelopment Powers Law. If passed, voters must hold a special referendum for approval. A local redevelopment agency is created by resolution of the city. Must have a definitive boundary, determination of light, and planned improvements to attract new private development. Again, the CPL boundary could play into this. A TAD, all TAD revenues may not cumulatively exceed ten percent of the local tax base. And revenue bonds may be issued but shall not exceed maturity of thirty years. As improvements in the TAD are made, the area should realize a significant increase in taxable value. The increased revenues are utilized to pay off revenue bonds. TADS are also intended to be used in urbanized or developed areas exhibiting light and promoting redevelopment and preservation of historic or natural assets. Centerville's history with the Tax Allocation District. A resolution to legislative delegation to establish a Centerville TAD was passed December third, nineteen eighty-five. There was a special election ordinance passed on September twenty-fourth, nineteen eighty-six. I counsel meeting for November fourth, referendum question regarding a Centerville TAD. The special election returns for the Redevelopment Powers Law, House Bill nineteen sixty-seven. Total votes, one hundred and fifty-eight, seventy were yes, no was eighty-eight. So they did not pass that TAD. So we have, we have gone that route before. I believe that specific area was more of the East Church Street corridor.
So I know that's not gonna happen.
So Tax Allocation Districts and both the CID are a little bit more labor intensive.
If the young people in the city don't vote to throw out the exemption, the senior exemption, they're not gonna do that.
They won't come out and vote?
They will not come out and vote.
The good thing about the BID, CID, and TAD, they're all taxes increased in a very targeted area, not throughout the whole city.
And it's in an area that's in decline. It's, it's, it's in decline.
Where would we, currently, where would we even target for something like that? It's designed for blighted or industrial areas, and we don't have a ton of blighted commercial property.
We don't, but we have a lot of threshold blighted commercial property. I've spoken with the mall ownership a couple of times, and they'd be interested in a TAD. So I think that we would have the opportunity to couple even more the TAD with the mall and the Town Center Plan. So that could work because they're all right there adjacent properties. The mall sees it as a great opportunity to, like we talked about when we applied for the EDA grant, take some of those concrete jungle elements of the large vast expanses of asphalt and try to work with it creatively to implement more of that Town Center feel and that open green space, et cetera. So that could be an opportunity there.
So, so they're willing to pay three mils to help improve that area?
Up to three.
Up to three mils.
It depends, yes. So the last tool in that Centerville can activate is a Land Bank Authority. A Land Bank Authority may acquire tax delinquent properties through a direct purchase of property or obtaining judgment against tax delinquent property. At a tax sale whereupon a bid may be submitted, the tax commissioner is required to accept the land bank authority's bid if there are no other bids. A land bank authority may manage, maintain, protect, rent, lease, repair, insure, alter, sell, trade, exchange, or otherwise dispose of any property on any terms and conditions determined by the sole discretion of the land bank authority. Land bank authorities are typically composed of four members and two appointed by the mayor, two appointed by the county commission. Centerville's history with the Land Bank Authority. And the city of Centerville was originally part of some discussions about the Housing County Land Bank Authority. Two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen, City Attorney Tidings and myself met with a large group about the topic multiple times, and it didn't proceed past these discussions for the city of Centerville. Housing County and Perry formed a Land Bank Authority in October two thousand and eighteen. I've attended many of those meetings over the years. In September two thousand and nineteen, we discussed this topic a couple of times at city council meetings. It, again, did not proceed past discussions, but did progress further than it did the first time. I think we all saw a little bit more of the utility of this tool. In September two thousand and twenty, City Attorney Tidings, Director Brumfield, and Director Hogan reviewed the information again and served with backup with the county. So that's kind of where we stand now.
This is the best vehicle to keep rid of light.
I, I think a Land Bank Authority could be very beneficial to the city of Centerville.
The whole county.
Well, the county has one with the city of Perry, but the city of Centerville hasn't been able to access that because we're not part of the Land Bank Authority. The proposal on the table was that this Housing County and the city of Centerville could form a separate Land Bank Authority in which the county commission would appoint three members and Mayor Harley would have the opportunity to appoint two members. And that would be the Housing County Centerville Land Bank Authority.
We just haven't pushed it. We've, we've talked to them a lot and we haven't pushed it. Ms. Tidings, can you sort of give us an update on the status?
Actually, the ball's in the county's court. Kate and I met with the county attorney after some progress that stalled. The ball was in their court because we can't have a Land Bank Authority without the county. It's my understanding they're not opposed to it. It's, they've got other things on their plate right now, but they also have some conditions on forming a Land Bank Authority in the city of Centerville about properties that would be taken in and how they would go out. And, you know, that's something that we're gonna need them to involve in because we can't create one on our own.
Yeah, one of the barrier to injuries about, for Land Bank Authorities specifically, is that you do need, it has to be the city and the county.
And the county.
There's no way to move forward just as a county, there's no way to move forward just as a city. And typically, you see jointly in bank authorities where you'll have a couple counties and three cities. And cities will fall in and fall out as they have needs to utilize a land bank authority. Because again, these are just tools. These are, these are mechanisms for Mayor and Council to further the agenda that the public has intended for them to further through elections. But I do think a Land Bank Authority could be really great. I know that Chairman Stahlmacher is big as concern, and he was talking about a Land Bank Authority with the city of Centerville, is all of the costs for Centerville to use the Land Bank Authority needs to be the burden of the city of Centerville. There needs to be a plan if you bring a property into the Land Bank Authority to get the property back out of the Land Bank Authority. Because you don't want to just hoard all of these properties and have it become a liability on the city. Because ultimately, we would be responsible for all of the upkeep of the properties during their time in the Land Bank Authority.
The only thing I don't like about that is that it sounds like in addition to all that, that we, we take on all of the financial responsibility, but the county has the majority on the, on the authority. So certainly seems like that there, there could be situations where the county couldn't come to the city in that way. That doesn't seem super desirable for us.
Smart, smart thing for us to do is to make sure that when we acquire a party, a piece of property, a parcel, that we have an avenue for it to go to the next place and move on. So that there's no accumulation of extra costs for the city.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that.
As long as we assure them, assure them that that's, that's what's gonna happen, I don't think we're gonna have a problem. Because they're looking out for our own self-interest.
True.
Not allowing us to accumulate huge properties like some cities have done into their systems and now they get tremendous overhead costs.
I do know they get, they get misused sometimes. On occasion, they get, they just sort of acquire property and sort of speculate on it and they just sort of get, you know, they get a little greedy. Some cities are trying to get their hands on any property they can get their hands on. I don't think that's the goal, the goal here. I think, and I thought, I think that's the intent. I think you're right, Mr. Mayor. I think that the, the goal of this is to provide for a legal way for the city to be able to, to purchase and dispose of property because currently, I mean, Ms. Tidings, you're correct, not wrong, but if we purchase something, we have a very limited, a very limited amount of things that we are allowed to do with it.
If we purchase property outright, we have to hold it.
For thirty years, right?
It, it actually depends on what mechanism we use to purchase it. But the Land Bank Authority, the purpose is to take properties that are, that are not current on taxes, blighted such as that, to get them cleaned up and back into the hands of a responsible taxpaying owner. That's the goal.
Would we have to hold it for two decades?
No, not, not in the Land Bank Authority, you don't.
The Land Bank can flip it, improve the light, get somebody in there.
You can do a couple of things with it. You can either acquire something and sort of bring it back up to zero and then sell it to somebody that can then improve it themselves, so that you can just get it back on the tax rolls.
The goal, the goal was not to, don't, don't mistake this mechanism for a way to flip properties. We did go to a meeting of the Valdosta Lawrence County Land Bank Authority, and many of these properties are properties you see that the outside is unkept or they've been vacant or there's no responsible party and there are tax liens. And the city's goal is not to go in and put tons of money, it's to clean them up minimally and maintain the grounds and get them out into the hands of someone else who will then improve them.
Gotcha.
So would we want to have a plan for it?
Right.
When you bring it in, you want to have a plan to get it up.
And I don't know that every Land Bank Authority operates that way. They take, the, the concern for them is to get properties in so they can eventually get them out. But the county did indicate to us that they would require that if properties, they approve for properties to be brought in to our Land Bank Authority, they would want us to already have a buyer for that property before they would agree that it could come in. And I guess we'd have to figure out.
And there was again, it was something Ms. said a minute ago, the LBA is composed of four members only. Two appointed by the mayor and two appointed by the county commissioner.
Correct.
So it's a fifty-fifty.
But, correct, but in the bylaws, intergovernmental agreement that the Housing County, County Attorney submitted to myself and Rebecca Tidings, they had three members for Housing County and two members for the city of Centerville. Because you can have up to seven members on the Land Bank Authority.
And that was their, their, their proposed makeup as designated by their proposed bylaws.
I can, I can understand that because if a property enters into the LBA, all the past two taxes and liens and everything will be, will go away. And that covers the school district, the county, and the city taxes.
And they also did stipulate that the Housing County Board of Education would be in attendance in most of the Centerville-Housing County Land Bank Authority meetings, which I think is a great opportunity for partnerships because we are talking about the extinguishment of all back due taxes, not just city taxes. And so it's important to have all of those taxing agents there at the table.
Well, I understand that, but the reality is if, if something is delinquent enough in its taxes that it winds up in the hands of the Land Bank Authority, that money's not coming in. And so the, the purpose of this is to clear it up so that we can get it back on the market so that a new owner can begin, you know, supporting it whatsoever.
Because oftentimes, the amount of taxes owed on it is more than the value of the property.
Right.
Well, that makes it prohibitive for somebody that wants to.
It's a vehicle to extinguish current existing taxes.
But you get it back on the active roll instead of just sitting there.
That's great.
Well, and one of the things that I've spoken at length with the Centerville Code Enforcement Office is, is there's so many out of town individuals who own air property, which was handed down to them by passed away family members, that they would be willing to just give the property. They don't want it, they have it been here, there's some people who are stationed out of country, and they would just give the property to the Land Bank Authority. You'd be able to extinguish past, past taxes. You'd be able to clean up the property because it's much more lucrative for a developer to go in there, build a single family home on a clean lot than it would be to go in there, pay all of the back taxes, demolish the home. You're really taking forty, fifty thousand dollars off of the burden of the developer in order to make sure that a single family home, multi-family home, et cetera, goes there.
If you've got a list of people that are looking to give away property, please give them my telephone number.
And it's important to remember that someone can only give you what they own. If they've got a fee simple deed with no encumbrances, they can title the property to you that way. If they have a quitclaim deed, then the person that quitclaimed to them only quitclaimed as much interest as they had, and it remains subject to those encumbrances. So it's not a quick and easy like that. It can be done. If we have heirs that have fee simple title and unencumbered property that want to give it to the Land Bank, I mean, that's, that would be fairly ideal situation and maybe they don't want to pay taxes. But it's important to remember, a party can only convey the interest they own and it's not always fee simple titled.
Well, and you can also, also acquire Land Bank Authority properties through judicial and rent process that would clear up any title issues as well. So, I mean, there's a lot of different tools available. And again, I just wanted to bring all five of these tools to you guys and make sure that we talked about local economic development tools that were afforded to the city based off the Georgia Constitution. And then Councilman Andrews kind of stole my punchline, but I do think suggested action. There is some prioritization of the next project that Mayor and Council, just you guys need to start thinking about. Center Park's done, that fire station's gonna be done in the blink of an eye. You know, Councilman Evans alluded that he may be a little bored in the next couple of years since we're done building buildings. So you guys just need to start thinking about what exactly you guys want to activate as far as local economic development tools. If Town Center at Centerville is your priority, I definitely suggest a Downtown Development Authority. I may also consider adding in a TAD district. I think that could be extremely lucrative. Continued community development is a number one priority in working on light throughout the entire city. I do think a Land Bank Authority would be extremely lucrative. So again, just wanted to bring this up to you guys, make sure we talked about it, make sure we had a good conversation. And I got to all of the information.
Let me just say this in terms of the, you know, the, the next thing. You know, I don't, I don't know that we're, are settled on what the next thing needs to be, but I think that we need to be mindful of how much time is passing. If you look at what is being developed around us, there are new things being built in Byron every day. There are new, new things being built across the street, across lots of boulevard from us every day. They're just building stuff right here. Right there, just, just knock down the old toys or us and are building several new places right there. And there's, there's things that are being built all around us. So it is essentially the same economic market. Is that fair to say, Kate? When you, when you can throw a rock from one and hit the other one, it's, it's the same economic market.
It's not like Centerville land is more expensive.
No, we are, we, we run the risk if we delay, we run the risk of missing a tremendous opportunity. When you see development happening in a circle all around you and it's not happening with you, then there's, I think there's, there's something, we should be looking into why that is happening and how we can, how we can put ourselves in a position to, to, to get some of that happening, you know, here in the city.
And we do have a lot of really great development projects in the pipeline. We've got the low income housing taxpayer project, the Litec project for twenty twenty. That's just approved for Abington and Galeray and Mall. That's gonna be a great project. It's really gonna help draw attention towards that Town Center area as delineated by the Clark Patterson Lee Plan. So I, I do think that it's, I, I echo Councilman Wright's sentiments in the fact that there's no time like the present. If Town Center at Centerville was going to happen, it would have happened in the past four years. So we might as well activate some of these tools so we can take a more proactive role in developing that.
I think particularly with this, this, this housing project that's gonna be built right here. To me, that is, that is more reason to, to move ahead because if you're gonna, that, that's gonna tear a big chunk of the city up for a long time. And so would be redevelopment to do out here if you're gonna, if you're gonna, it's gonna mess up traffic and it's gonna be inconvenient. If you're gonna do it, let's do it once and then not start, let's not get one project finished and restart it again a year later. You know, that's, that's, that's one of the nice things about the way we, the way that y'all did the Church Street project out here. We kind of did everything that needed to be do at one time, and it tore everything up for a while, but we're done for the foreseeable future out there. There's not, there's not much to add or to change, we hope. So I think that's, that's certainly something to, to consider as we move forward. But this, the other side of this is, we have to be prepared if we do want to make some moves in this area. We have to be prepared to fund it. You gotta pay for it. Land is not gonna be for free. And you are, you're, 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 when you're talking about purchasing property and, and then either, you know, working with a developer or putting in a position with, with the land bank or whatever. There's several different kind of ways you can, you can skin that cat, but you are, you're making an investment in the next several generations of the city of Centerville. You know, in the same way that this building was an investment, the police station was an investment, the fire station is an investment, the park is an investment, that is the next, that is the next step here. You know, this is, this has always been a, a beautiful town, and we are, we are only making it better. You know, this is, uh, this has always been a, a beautiful town, and we're, we're only making it better. You know, this is really gonna be the best place to live in middle Georgia if we continue down this path, and I would, you know, encourage mayor council to, uh, move forward with all due haste.
Thank you, Kate.
Yes, sir. My pleasure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
Yeah, at this point, then, it's, since everybody seems to agree, uh, I'll make a personal point to give to the county commissioners and discuss it, and bring the information back to you.
I, I think we, I think it does need to be discussed, uh, as to how we're gonna approach it and where we're gonna approach it. So.
Well, how would you like to approach it? When would you like to approach it?
It's like I said, I think we need to have some more, uh, this is the, the night they gave us the tools. So let's talk about that some more, and, uh, and then we'll move forward.
I, I, I'm fine with that. I just, I know that you just saw the presentation that we've been talking about it since twenty nineteen.
That's just, that's just got the perk done.
We're here knocking on this, this, this doesn't have anything to do with the park. We're, we're knocking on the door twenty twenty-one.
Well, we, we'll move forward. We, 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 we've done a good job in the past of moving forward, and we will continue to move forward, provide good benefits to communities and, and a great place for our citizens and.
How far away do you think this project is, Councilman Adams?
So we're gonna move forward. I'm not gonna say it all in one. We're, we're gonna move forward. We're gonna work together just like we have in the past, and we're gonna do for our citizens, just like, just. Okay, um, that's all I have. I just, I wanted to get something else.
Anybody else in the comments? All right. Thank you, Ms. Hogan.
Yes, sir.
All right, we have the last item here is the comments from the council. Close one, please.
It's really exciting seeing, um, what's happened out here in, in front of city hall and down over across the street from the church over the last, um, year or so. And, uh, I appreciate everybody that's been involved in that. And, um, it was good to, um, do a little ribbon cutting today, um, over at Center Park. And, um, it'd be good once we get past the, I guess, the time that we're in right now so that we can utilize it and use it the way that it's supposed to be used. But it is exciting seeing the, the changes over the last year or so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Close two?
I got to go down the slide at the park today.
And we got pictures.
That's all I have to say. That was a lot of fun. I'm looking forward to it. I got a, a three-year-old that is gonna be all over that place soon. It's a, it's a.
Call us when you turn the water on.
Thank you, Mayor.
We noticed you didn't, you didn't take the most exciting one. Councilman Andrews took that one.
Councilman Andrews, Councilman Andrews got, uh, partially stuck going down through the most exciting one.
Well, he had a big thank you, didn't he?
I, I was gonna call you short, not fast. We had, we had a great time out there. We're excited about what's going. Looks fantastic out there. It really does.
That's right. Close three, please.
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any copies tonight.
Thank you, sir. Close four?
Yes, um, I wrote a short slide, just to make it clear, everybody knew that, saw it. It was a lot of fun. I didn't endanger myself, so it was good. Um. Security is very important this time of year. And I, and, and if I can't stop my foot hard enough to make sure people understand to lock your doors, lock your car doors, don't take anything for granted because other people will take you for granted if you leave your stuff unlocked. I know that there was a vehicle stolen and the vi- and keys were left in the vehicle. There's all kinds of things that happen this time of year. Don't leave yourself open to be a victim, please.
And don't leave stuff in the car that people can see.
And also nowadays, because more people are ordering online, there's a lot of packages being delivered all day and all night.
Yep.
So if you know you've got packages coming in and trust your neighbors, certainly let them know to pick up the packages for you so that way they're not taken by other people. There's a lot of that going on as well. So, you know, we're in a different, different time, uh, whereas, you know, where I think we're a little bit more vulnerable by, uh, having that stuff just sitting out there. So, uh, please protect yourself, protect your neighbors, and call nine-one-one if you see something, say something.
And don't post it on Facebook. Call nine, call nine-one-one. See that all the time. Call nine-one-one.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, I agree, Councilman Wright, uh, make sure you call nine-one-one. You see anything suspicious out there, call nine-one-one. Get it on the record. You know, our officers are there in a few minutes at the most, and they'll check it out. They'll find out what it is. You know, it's, uh, it's very discouraging when we hear something happening and somebody says, well, I saw something going on, but I didn't know what, I was, didn't want to call to get my name out there, or whatever it is, you know. Call nine-one-one. Get it on the record. Don't leave your car unlocked. That's, that's not breaking an entry. That's just, you know, that's just foolish. Breaking in is when they actually break the window to get in. So anyhow, I, we don't have anything else. I hope everybody has some great holidays. I'm, and I'm really, really mentally depressed about not having a parade this Saturday. Oh, I, I tell you, that was, that's so much of my thoughts and everything, and a lot of people talking about it, uh. What we're gonna make up for when this year comes up. So we'll all get well. City's gonna fully recover, although we've done a good job, the city has. Thank you, everybody. Thank you to all constituents and our employees here. Everybody's done a great job keeping the city going, keeping it working. We especially appreciate our police, fire, and our public works who are out there in the, in the public every day, all day, doing the things they do, help keep us all safe and make sure we have something when this is all over with. Okay, everybody have a great evening. Thank you so much. Council's over.